Good evening and welcome to tonight's Council of the Whole. It is Thursday, May 28 at 6:00 PM and we will call this meeting to order. We'll start with a... We normally would have Pledge of Allegiance, so it's not on the agenda, but we'll do that quickly. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counsel Carrasco.
Present.
Counsel Clements.
Present.
Counsel Estrada.
Present.
Counsel Manna.
Present.
Counsel Moriarty.
Present.
Counsel Pellequin.
Present.
Counsel Steves.
Present.
Counsel Vandal.
Present.
Counsel Vecchia.
Present.
Nine here.
Thank you. Agenda item number three was to consider and accept the Town Council of the Whole meeting minutes on Monday, April 7, 2015. However, those have actually already been voted on, so that is on erroneously. Just wanted to make that known in case any questioned. Agenda item number four is vote to approve by transfer from free cash the sum of $151,883 for the purpose of demolition of condemned buildings within the town of Southbridge.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Counselor Vecchia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a general question to the Town Manager. Mr. Town Manager, the way you have these things laid out, you're not going to be raising taxes. Is that correct?
Correct.
What about the $223,000 for Bay Path? Did you allow for that, that we were not going to raise taxes also?
Yes. That's already in the budget.
It's already in the budget. So Karen, when you thought we... I had a conversation with you today. He says it isn't going to raise taxes at all. You just made that comment.
Well, put it this way. The council voted to not increase the $871,000 in taxes.
Right.
The Bay Path budget is within the budget that's been presented that does not include that $871,000. But remember, because the citizens voted in override, they voted to tax themselves a little bit more.
Right.
And that's the reason. That will cause an increase in taxes, very small, but it's not part of the $871.
My point is this. You just made a comment about a minute ago saying that we weren't going to raise taxes.
Right.
But now you're making another comment that taxes would be raised at $223,000.
Yeah, we said that all along.
I know that, but you just said that... You said the opposite of that one. If you watch the tape on tonight, you said we weren't going to raise taxes at all.
No, no, we need to be very precise with that.
Okay, I'm just saying. Okay, so all these items that we're voting on are all in your formula, that bottom line.
They all are within the other revenue sources that do not include the $871,000 in new taxes.
Okay, thank you very much. So that was just a general question for all the items tonight, but thank you very much.
Counselor Steves.
Yes, specific to this item. One question I was wondering if you can explain this, Mr. Town Manager, is I understand that you are looking at demolishing 44 Cohasse Street, which certainly needs it.
For what?
44 Cohasse Street.
Yes.
How do you intend to do that? Because I know that that was supposed to go to Conservation last week and it got postponed because they didn't have a quorum.
Prior to the demolition, we have to have a Concom vote because, you know, determination, non-applicability, because apparently the garage sits on top of...
It does.
Where the old channel of the river was routed. So we have to have their approval before we can move. Disappointed to hear that was not given because part of the reason for the emergency was to get that down to prevent any disruption of the river, i.e. the structure falling into the river, which is what we're afraid of right now. So hopefully, the commission will quickly call a meeting, get a quorum, and take action because we're not going to be able to do anything until they do.
I know that they have a special meeting set up for, I think it's the 12th.
It's what?
I think they have one set up for the 12th. I don't know if that's on the agenda or not.
12th of June?
Yeah, it's a Friday.
That would be the soonest we'd probably be able to do it then.
Yeah.
But there's a couple of other procedural steps we have to go through with DEP.
Right.
That take 10, 11 days. We've started that process, but, you know, if the Concom can act within that timeframe, we'll be fine.
And which of the other buildings do you intend to take down?
The other two buildings, the one at 53 Worcester Street, which has a great big red X on it. I think Conrad asked about it a couple of weeks ago about cleaning it up and what we after having a staff discussion, what we decided was rather than try to clean it up, we're just trying to take it all down, which means the building's down, the lot's cleaned, everything's all set. Because the mechanism to clean the lot is the same mechanism as to take the building down.
Right.
We have to put up the money and then we lean the property. So we just said, let's just go for the whole McGilla. And the third property is, and I don't have the number, I think it's 789. Will probably knows it's at the corner. It's on Main Street, the 6th family that's falling.
Right, it's at the corner of Main and Worcester.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So those are the three properties. We don't have... We have the estimate on 44 Cohasse. That's $40,000 and change. We don't have the estimate on Main Street or Worcester Street yet. We're working on those. So I'm hopeful approximately 200, which is the 151... I'm sorry, 175, plus the $25,000 we're going to get remitted back to us for West Street. We've negotiated that return, thanks to some good work Middy did and Rob Kaprera and I lent a hand. So the 175 minus the 40 leaves about 135, and we're hoping that in that 135, we've got enough to take the two buildings down. My instructions to the Building Commissioner, I don't know if he's here tonight, Nick, was to basically roll on both of them. And the first one that we can get all the permissions in place, that's the first one to come down. They're both pretty big eyesores and they're number one and number two on the hit list. Cohasse isn't even number one and number two.
I know.
But we're getting that because it's a propitious opportunity. The neighborhood's spoken to councils. Many of you have called and said, we really would like you to get that down. And the owner violated the court order ordering them to take it down, so now it jumps to number one.
Counsel Vandal.
Chairman, through you, to the Town Manager. On Cohasse Street, we have two buildings side by side.
36 is owned by a finance company or a bank, and they have committed to us they're going to take it down.
That's the 2 family?
Right. So we don't want to spend Town money to do it. We're being patient and trying to nudge them and get them to do it. They keep telling us they're going to do it and they keep, you know, procrastinating.
Because while the equipment was there, if we were going to take that one down, get more bank feed, you know...
Yeah, you could, but I wouldn't recommend it just because we're being told the owner will take it down.
No, no, that's...
And in this case, 36 is a finance company or a bank. The other one is privately held. We know the bank has the money. The other party does not have the money. We know that. So it will not get taken down unless we do it.
Let's pull a fire under them, no?
I like the pun.
Thank you.
Counselor Estrada.
How many buildings? Three would be the number probably... I'm pretty sure that if we can get all three down for the 175, we'll be lucky. Because the building at Main... On Main Street, Building Commissioner has estimated that could be $70,000 alone to tear down. So if that one's $70,000, then that's only going to leave us about $65,000 available. And that's hopefully enough to take down Worcester Street. So it's going to be close. And it could be we end up $10,000, $12,000 short, in which case I'll ask Karen to identify some money from another source. We've got plenty of other buckets we can go into, come back to the council and ask you for that shortfall because I think everybody agrees those three buildings need to come down.
Counsel Vecia.
Chairman, to the Town Manager, on your memo on the transfer of fund request for building demolition, this is just trust verified. Presently, there's a balance of $151,883,000 in FY '15 certified free cash. This balance will revert to the fund balance on July 1st, if not incumbent. What fund balance?
It'll drop to the bottom line, and when Karen closes the books and recertifies free cash in the fall, it'll pop back up into next year's free cash.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Clements.
Yes.
Counsel Estrada.
Yes.
Counsel Manna.
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty.
Yes.
Counsel Pellequin.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Vandal.
Yes.
Counsel Vecia.
Yes.
Counsel Carrasco.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. The manager handed this to me right before the meeting and asked me to read it, and I forgot to until just now, but just as a brief announcement because it is referencing this weekend. Saturday, May 30th, happens to be the annual Moore Street yard sale. So due to high pedestrians and traffic expected throughout the day, and in the interest of safety, Casella will begin curbside collection of trash at 6:30 a.m. that morning in the Moore Street areas. So a little earlier than they normally would. So for the people in that area that would be getting their trash picked up, just get that out a little earlier. And they apologize for any inconvenience that may cause. Agenda item number five is vote to adopt the fiscal year 2016 Town of Southbridge General Fund operating budget per the attached voting document in the amount of $48,470,159 to be funded as follows. Raise and appropriate $44,000... I'm sorry, $44,840,232. Transfers from other available funds include sale of street list books, $500. Cable operating account, $126,419. Septic loan program, $6,046. Debt service reserve, $705,865. Perpetual care interest, $2,000. Polling hours, $3,420. Armory debt service reserve, $55,024. Access road debt service, $280,740. Landfill reimbursement fund, $56,000. Sale of lots and graves, $1,500. Subtotal transfers from other available funds comes out to $1,237,514. Other transfers include landfill reimbursement fund in the amount of $590,000, landfill royalty fund at $950,000, free cash, $850,000, and Bay Path bond premium account, $2,413. So the subtotal of other transfers comes out to $2,392,413. And the total general fund budget comes out to $48,470,159. Any questions, comments, discussion? Counselor Vecia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The number five that goes back to this is very well put together, Mr. Town Manager, Karen Harnoyes. So everything is here and it all comes back, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands this. The school, public schools, final figure is, as you got on your document here, the backup That's the final figure.
Correct.
Okay. And the enterprise fund, the water fund, that's separate, which we'll be voting on.
They're included in the overall budget, but they require separate votes and those are listed, yes.
But they're not included in the $48,470?
The...
$48 million?
No.
They're not included. Right. This is a very good job. The figures come back. If you agree and don't disagree with them, at least everything comes back because I checked everything else.
If that's the case, thank Karen because she's the one who makes sure they all come back.
Excellent. Very good. This is excellent.
I do my work and I hand it to her and she makes sure it actually balances.
No, this is excellent. All the figures come back. Thank you very much.
All set? Counsel Pellequin.
I was concerned about the EHS Subcommittee's recommendation being different than this budget number, and I was wondering why we could not have a vote on this.
I wanted to say a couple of things to the council before you take the vote, and I think this would be the time because that's basically the issue. So the EHS Subcommittee had voted to recommend to the council that the council take any surplus funds that are left when all the budget change memos are put into the computer and take that surplus and put it in the school budget. Now, that is a recommendation of the Subcommittee and not the whole council. So if it is the will of the council to do that, we can report to you that the surplus, which appears on the spreadsheet that you have that goes with the vote, is $36,806. I'm doing that from memory. Karen, is that right? Thank you. $36,869. It's on the bottom of what's called the balancing spreadsheet. Nope.
The bottom of the projection model that shows all revenues, all expenses, and there's the bottom line.
That's it right there, yep. So a few... That sheet is our rolling tally sheet. It tallies all the revenues. It tallies all the expenses, as are before you tonight. And it says, here's the bottom line when all that's done. Now, there are two things you need to be aware of. First, at the current time, with all budget change memos in, everything as presented in this memo, there's that $36,000 surplus. Now, you can use it for the school budget vis-à-vis the EHS vote. You can let it not be appropriated, in which case it falls to free cash theoretically next year. Or you can put it somewhere else that the council has a priority. The second thing I want you to be aware of is that the Senate budget was approved and it concurred with the House and the Governor's local aid recommendation. And I feel very, very safe in saying to you that the $108,000 in UGGA, other government aid, is... We're going to get it. So there's 108 available. I feel very, very confident in saying that to you. So the combination of the two numbers is 108 plus the 36, and you have that money available if you wish. Now, under the budget item on your agenda number... The next page, one of the revolving funds. I'm going to give you a proposal, which I've got here because it's just brand spanking new, to use some of that money in a way that's actually going to capture tax revenue for the town. So it's the very next item. It's number six. The tax had a revolving account. But I'm not going to give you a recommendation to use all of it, just part of it. So there's going to be a surplus either way. So you just need to be aware of that, and whatever the council's will is, that's what we'll do.
Ms. Harnoyes.
If I could. Usually what we do, because Town Manager Picos isn't familiar with it, we usually go through the voting document and read each department name and the amount, and then we'll go through there. And if anyone has any questions, we'll put a hold on it and then we come back afterwards so that we actually go through the whole voting document.
Counsel Manna.
That was a question that I... Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. That was a question that I had asked Counsel Pellequin, and Mrs. Harnoyes just answered it. I said that was a question that I just asked Counsel Pellequin, but Mrs. Harnoyes just answered it. Because I was going to question the $36,000 surplus. Is that $35,000 from the vehicle, the police vehicle, to the Town Manager?
The what?
Is that $35,000... Is $35,000 of that $36,000, that surplus, is that a police vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I haven't... I really do... When I read over the police audit, I kind of have an issue with that because our police audit that we spent $14,000 and some change on, maybe a little bit less, I'm not sure on the exact amount, but somewhere about $14,000 of the tax money that they recommended that the police department have three new vehicles every year. And they also recommended 40 police officers, but we don't have that. But, I mean, we're taking away a police vehicle. They're only going to get one new one this year, I believe. So I do have a problem with that, and I think that money should have stayed right there in that department. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
The night the PPP Subcommittee discussed that item, I had not had an opportunity to conduct a full-blown analysis of the police department fleet and what we needed and all that. So I reported to the committee, when they made the recommendation to cut the cruiser, that I would concur with that recommendation in my budget, and so this budget reflects that. But that I would conduct an evaluation of the police department fleet, and I have that actually here, and that if I determined that the need for the second cruiser was legitimate because the budget still contains 35 for one cruiser, but not the second. If I found that the request was legitimate, that I would include the second cruiser in my capital budget. I did that analysis. I did determine it's legitimate. I'll discuss that with the council under the capital budget, and I did put funding for the second cruiser in the capital budget. So it's the council's pleasure, if you want to have the discussion as part of the operating budget and restore that funding, that's up to you. I'd be happy to give you the figures about the mileages on these vehicles. If you want to save that debate and have it in the capital budget, then you can have it in the agenda item tonight for the capital budget. Up to you.
Hold on. Counsel Steves, and then...
As I recall, since we're talking about the local aid funds and the surplus, as I recall, you put, was it $100,000 in free cash into the school budget, right?
No, I did not. Right now, that 36 is undesignedated. It's just sitting there.
I'm trying to... Because I remember during Subcommittee's you were talking about that if we were to get this local aid, you were recommending taking some money out and replacing it with the local aid funds.
The school committee presented three budgets.
Yeah.
One was $3 million over the manager's recommendation. One was about $1.6 million, and the other was about $311,000 over. At one point during the discussions, I was trying to close the gap on that first one the...
Right.
Because the second budget that we thought was $1.6 over, it turned out there was a misunderstanding. It wasn't. It was... There was only two budgets ever presented. There was the one that was $3 million over the manager's recommendation and the one that was about $600 over. We were working on that $600. And frankly, it seemed... I mean, part of what I tried to do is anticipate what the council might support. So I had conversations and I didn't see the support...
Right.
For trying to include that $600,000, so I stopped working on that. So the budget that I'm recommending tonight is the original manager's budget from back in February-ish, with the understanding that there is now this $36,000 surplus because of the cut in the police department, which you can use for whatever is your pleasure. Or not.
Right, right. And I was clarifying. You mentioned we're putting $850,000 in free cash at the moment into the budget, and after having the vote we just took on item four, does that leave anything left in free cash?
That's it, say it again.
Does that leave anything left in free cash?
No, free cash will be depleted. It'll be zeroed out.
It's done. Okay.
All set, Counsel? Counsel Vecia.
A couple of things. You state in the capital budget, you put the other cruiser back. Is that what you just stated?
That's correct.
But there are councils up here that voted against another cruiser.
A Subcommittee, yes.
So that would be a discussion when we get there. Okay. So my discussion here is, this 36... To the Chairman. This is to the Chairman. This 36... You got extra down here, $36,869. Would somebody like to make a motion to give it to the school department? Would this be the time to do that?
If somebody wanted to make that motion, they could.
I make the motion.
He was asking about making the motion to increase the school department's budget by the $36,869 surplus. He made the motion. Counsel Steves has now made that second. So at this point, we would have any discussion on Counselor Vecia's amendment. Counselor Pellequin.
I'm sorry, I just put down the piece of paper that had the...
I can't hear you. Sorry.
I'm looking for a piece of paper that had a number written on it, but it was my understanding that we were going to put the additional unrestricted general government aid from the Senate budget into the school budget as well. That seemed to be the discussion that we were having at the EHS meeting, so I'm a little taken aback by the $36,000 figure because I thought it was going to be more than that. I believe it was $108,000 altogether, if you added the two together.
That would be another motion when we get to it.
Right.
This is a separate motion. That would be another motion when we get to the 108.
So you just want to vote on the $36,000 now?
Well, that's what...
And then...
Right now, yes. But then we make a motion at 108 when we got to it on the sheet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or feedback on Counselor Vecia's amendment? Seeing none, a roll call, please, on the amendment to increase the school department budget by $36,869.
Counsel Estrada.
Yes.
Counsel Manna.
No.
Counsel Moriarty.
Yes.
Counsel Pellequin.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Vandal.
Yes.
Counsel Vecia.
Yes.
Counsel Carrasco.
Yes.
Counsel Clements.
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
Okay, so motion carries. So the school's budget has increased by that $36,869. Just for the sake of public information, you already did the math. Fantastic. That should bring the school department budget at this point in time to $25,574,689. As for the actual rest of it, Counsel Manna. $889?
Yes.
Can't even work the calculator. Thank you. Counsel Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. That $35,000 that we just put into the school department was... Should have been for a police vehicle. I know the school needs the money also, but our police department needs the money also too. And I did find that SUV that you were talking about in the capital budget. That's $40,000 more than what we took out of the police department budget. So that's just like... It doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense. It would have made more sense to put the $35,000 back into the police department. But now we're asking for $40,000 for an SUV when they would have had $35,000. So it's $5,000 more. So it's just... It doesn't make any sense to me. That's all. Thank you.
Just as a quick correction, too, on Counsel Carrasco's first calculation and the second. It's actually $25,574,689. So third time's a charm there. Counselor Pellequin.
I don't understand Counselor Manna's concern about the SUV being moved to the capital budget as opposed to the... I'm forgetting the word now. I don't understand why a vehicle would be more expensive in the capital budget as opposed to our general operating budget. Is it because of the $5,000 for installation or other costs after purchasing the vehicle? I mean, I understand that that would be something we would need to do for the police vehicle, whether we purchased it with an operating budget or a capital budget plan. So I don't see why they should look like they cost different amounts of money.
I would concur. Counsel Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to entertain a motion that any capital budget... We have our capital budget here this evening, which I fully believe the Town Manager anticipated we would discuss and all, but I, for one, feel that we have not had a time to discuss some of these concerns, and it could become a long, long evening. And I would like us to not make any decisions or movements on the capital budget without first having a subcommittee meeting where we can vet this fully. And it was my, I did ask Ms. Harney prior to the meeting whether or not that is something that, it had to be done tonight, and it was the understanding that potentially, the capital budget could be done at another meeting, which I would then suggest we try to get in before the 15th, say, meeting, where we could then potentially vote on the capital budget by the 15th, last meeting of the season, of the session.
I had actually discussed with Sean and Esteban that I would recommend to the council tonight, because the capital budget is, you haven't had one in years, so this turned out to be an enormous undertaking. Frankly, if I'd known, I might not have tried. But it was a huge amount of work, and it wasn't possible to get it to you any sooner. So I anticipated that what would happen tonight is we'd go through it if you wanted to have questions answered, but that you would take no votes tonight. And nobody seemed clear, because it's been so long since you've had one, whether the whole capital budget went to one subcommittee, didn't go to a subcommittee, or went pieces to subcommittees. Nobody knew. So I said, all right, with Sean's permission, we'll put it on the agenda, see what the council wants to do with it. But you're quite right. It's a little much to ask people to get that kind of a document four days ago, five days ago, whatever it was, and then, you know, vote on it tonight.
I have no problem hosting a meeting. Certainly would host a meeting under general government or whatever. We can all attend if you choose to, as we've done in the past on budget meetings, and go over everything tooth and nail and get our questions answered so that this evening, you know, obviously, there's questions such as yours and others. And I think it would just take too long. So the motion would be to postpone this agenda item until a subcommittee has been held. Okay, and I don't...
I was gonna say, for what it's worth, we don't even need the motion.
Right, I'm just, just that we're all in agreement, I guess, or not in agreement.
Since there's been a motion in a second, we can, any discussion on Councilor Clements' motion to remove?
Yes. I agree with her motion, because everything should be vented in subcommittee. And it's a big package, so it should go to the subcommittee. That's my own opinion. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns on Councilor Clements' motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pellican?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Councilor Steves.
To get back to the original discussion, we were talking, what Councilor Pellican was talking about, about the local aid issue. I was thinking about something, actually, early on the way to work this morning. I don't know if we can legally do this, so I'm gonna ask you that town manager question first. If we were to decide that we wanted to put this local aid into the town council reserve, but specify that we would use it for school priorities, would that be legal? And that essentially, the schools would have to come to us to use some of it?
I'm going to give you a memo in a minute, which is going to request use of the vast majority of that 108 for another purpose. I'm going to give the council a memo, which is going to request usage of the vast majority of that 108, to be specific, $50,000 of it, for a very specific use, which I think will incur great benefit for the community tax-wise. So I would suggest that you hold off on that debate. The answer to your question is yes, you can do that. You can take your normal 100,000 reserve, and you can beef it up to 200,000. And you can reserve to yourselves later what you want to use it for. Now, there is a small fly in the ointment. The statute that allows you to establish a reserve fund has language in it, and I'd have to defer to Karen on this, because I'm not sure if the reserve fund that we do is pursuant to the section of chapter 44 dealing with reserve funds. If it is, then the language says clearly, once money's put into the reserve fund, it can be expended out of that fund only for emergency and unforeseen purposes. Now, putting it in there for the purpose of later putting it into a budget, which is clearly foreseen, the Department of Revenue would deny that.
Oh.
They would tell you, you can't do that. So you can put the money in, the likelihood is you can't get it out if it's done under that statute. And I would have to go off to my office quickly to look this down, getting a nod. So yes, it is under that statute, which means, no, you can put it in, but you can't get it back out. You'd have to have 108,000 worth of school department unforeseen or emergency expenditures, which they would petition you for, and then you could grant the money to do it. You'd have to be pretty artful doing that, given this conversation, which is now on record.
I was thinking, I was thinking in terms more of some of the unfunded priorities, but we can't do it that way. We can't.
I don't think you could pull that off with a straight face, say, we didn't know it was coming.
I didn't know. Thank you for telling me.
Any other questions? At this point, I don't know if it's best if Ms. Harney, I know some of us had confusion as to making sure we have the appropriate updated materials. I don't know if it's best to kind of go through each budget with your expertise guiding the way, in case people had questions, or...
We've had several budget memo changes, so we might not have one here today, so...
No, this one that you have in your package reflects budget change memos one through nine. They are all netted in here, okay?
Just in case people had questions, as Ms. Harney pointed out earlier, that's all.
Does you want me to read, too?
Sure, you might as well.
Okay. So go through the voting document dated May 26, 2015. FY 2016, budget appropriation votes, under general government, town council, $14,300. Town manager, $276,794.
I have a question.
Okay, we'll put a hold on that?
I don't want to answer the answer, Councilor.
Oh, sure.
How much did we set aside for? I don't remember how much we set aside for the salary for the coming town manager. I've got the book in front of me, but I don't remember what the figure was.
I believe...
How much did we set aside specifically for the salary for the coming town manager? The new one. I've got the book here.
$142,000.
$142.
But that actual expenditure would be negotiable?
Right.
Okay. Town accountant, $155,106. Assessors, $191,146. Town treasurer-collector, $316,033. Town attorney, $110,000. Town clerk, $167,931. Elections and registration, $52,347. Planning board, $22,442. Economic development, $60,034. Cable TV advisory committee, $126,419. Next section, general government program accounts, and they're all under the subheading "administration." Audit fees, $33,500. Copy machine costs, $18,000. Telephone, $41,000. Postage, $47,000. Natural gas, $45,000. Heating fuel, $145,000. Property management miscellaneous, $15,000. Land management miscellaneous, $5,000. Reserve for property repair, maintenance, and demolition, $50,000. And motor vehicle fuel and lubricants, $220,000, for a total administration of $619,500. Data processing, $193,500. Council reserve, $100,000. Contributory retirement, $2,948,711. Subheading of personnel, sick/vacation/leave buyback, $28,810. Recruitment and processing, $7,100. In-service training, $2,000. Employer Medicare tax, $120,000, for a subtotal personnel of $157,910. Group health and life, $3250,000.
Do you hear, Mr. Chair? Does that include the new shift of 60-40 for our employees?
Yes.
July 1st, thank you.
General insurance section, workers' compensation, $156,771. Police and fire indemnification, $44,000. Unemployment compensation, $15,000. Property and liability insurance, $310,360. Deductible liability, $2,500, for a subtotal under general insurance, $528,631. Boards, committees, and commissions. Central mass regional planning, $4,338. Airport commission, $200. Conservation commission, $400. Licensing board, $750. Historical commission, $750. Zoning board of appeals, $750, for a subtotal boards, committees, $7,188. Debt service, principal on debt, $1,593,183. Interest on long-term debt, $1,191,213. Interest on short-term debt, $11,811, for a subtotal debt service of $2,796,207. And under the section of special accounts, revaluation services, $45,000. Ambulance billing services, $30,000. Medicaid billing, $17,000. Preparation for sale of town-owned property, $8,000. And GAZB 45, the OPEB actuarial study update, for $1,000, for a subtotal special accounts, $101,000. That brings us to a general government total of $12,195,199. And usually, at this point, we do a show of hands to vote this section.
I didn't hear you.
So usually, what we'll do at this point is vote on that general government subtotal. Either roll call, show of hands, whatever.
Are you recognizing me to speak?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the town manager. I see we have the town attorney here for $110,000. But there was some talk about also hiring a firm for municipalities, for municipal services, such as, like...
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The attorney, we have the town attorney for $110,000, but there was some talk before about hiring a law firm, like someone from out in Boston or Worcester, one of the bigger cities, like when we had Kolbman and Page. Are you still looking into that? And is that in this budget?
The question is, am I going to make a recommendation on council services?
Yes.
Yes, the memo is actually all written and typed and sitting on my desk, and I'm waiting for a call back from one of the three firms on clarification of their billing rate.
Right, but I don't see that money in here.
That's the town council budget.
Oh, it's just the town, I thought this was just for Attorney Capera.
No.
Okay, it's for everything altogether.
Town council budget's, I think, $110,000, thereabouts?
Yes. So it's for everything altogether?
I call it town council, that's a misnomer. It's town attorney.
Yes, town attorney. So everything's altogether. That $110,000 covers everything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Vecchia.
It includes all the attorneys, not just Bobby Capera.
The only attorney it doesn't include is the attorney for tax titles, which is a separate account.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Any other questions on the general government portion of the budget? Seeing none, well, we would need a motion to vote on that, actually.
I make a motion to vote on the general government total of $12,195,199.
Second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pellican?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries.
Next section, public safety. Police, $3,405,207. Fire and ambulance, $2,307,009. Inspections, $110,29. And the public safety program account, streetlights, $173,724, for a public safety total of $5,995,969.
We should make a motion on that, too?
No, no, no. She's not done with that.
Yes, she is.
Yeah, that's all, that's all of public safety.
I make a motion to approve the public safety budget of $5,995,969.
Second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Councilor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to ensure that, now, these totals, because I know that there's a couple vacancies in the fire department as well, these totals cover all the vacancies.
All except the one we eliminated.
One you, okay, the one you eliminated, okay. But, and I do want to just air my frustrations again on the $35,000 for the cruiser, and that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Carrasco.
Yes, this is something that I mentioned during the subcommittee meeting in regards to the fire budget, which I understand is, it's imperative and very sometimes needed, but I am afraid that this council is going to be setting a precedence in regards to department-wide trainings. I'm just putting it out there, this year, we're gonna, if voted on, we're approving $24,000, about $24,000 for department-wide training for the fire department, and I believe we're setting a precedence as a council, because who knows what department next is going to come to us and say, I want a whole department-wide training. And if I recall, it was suggested also in the police audit that the police department do the same thing. So not saying anything now, I'm just saying, I said it during the subcommittee meeting, and that's why I will not be in favor of this budget because of that precedent being set.
I have Councilor Manah, and then Councilor Vecchia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I understand that the police audit did mention trainings, and I believe that they have been having their trainings throughout. So they've been getting those done. I believe Chief Schret did speak on that. To the town manager, or is the fire chief here? Is the fire chief here? Could I ask you, Mr. DeFranzo?
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
The $24,000 that's being funded for the trainings, is this mandatory trainings that are coming down to you by the state? Are the unfunded mandated trainings?
No, this would be an unmandated training. However, in the fire service community, we train as a group. Anytime there's a major structural fire, all of our firefighters have to function at the same time. However, when we work, we work as individual groups of about six firefighters each. So there's very little time for me to put all four groups together, to combine them, to do an actual training, to see where our weak points are, where our strengths are, and then figure out where to go in the future. So with the general training, we can get all of the groups working together and simulate a structural fire where we can get everybody working at the same time to understand what we need to do moving forward. So this is a new initiative, however, it was taken out of my operating budget from last year, so we just recalculated some figures and were able to come up with these dollars to make it go, so.
I guess my next question would be, if this training went through, would that satisfy any of the requirements from the unfunded trainings that are mandated by the state?
The state really doesn't have any direct correlation for firefighter training. They have the initial training that we subscribe to, which is the firefighter 1-2 training, but any ongoing trainings, the state doesn't mandate us to do anything. NFPA, which is a regulatory commission, again, we're not bound by NFPA. However, if we were ever to be judged in court, that would be the series of documents that they would pull out to look at, to compare what it is that we do to a national standard. Now, the national standard that we're trying to meet would be to have some type of live-fire structural event that we could simulate, where our people would get the necessary skills that they need and keep on top of as we go forward. So I can't answer you honestly and say there's any state mandated training. There's no state unmandated training. This is a training that we believe we need based on national standards through the NFPA.
Okay. And my last question would be, when was the last time your department had any type of training like this?
A whole department-wide training? I don't ever recall one, and I've been here almost 13 years.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Vecchia.
So what the vice chair is saying is that, and the subcommittee, you didn't vote for this. Were you the only one?
I don't recall the vote. I got my notes on the budget stack.
Was that the last meeting that I was excused from?
The majority vote was in favor.
Yes.
To recommend the budget.
It might have been 4-2, or there were seven people voting, so it might have been...
So I was there, too.
5-2, or 4-3.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Clements?
Thank you. Through you, to the fire chief, also. Did you fall within the parameters that were set for you this year in terms of the budget cuts as requested, so that we could meet the $870,000 reduction you did?
Yes.
And so you reduced a position?
Yes.
And made other modifications?
Yes.
Within? And this is something you feel is as important as... And this is something you feel is as important as the position, potentially, or, I mean, you know, we're talking a lot of money for a full...
We are. Obviously, I'd much rather have the firefighter, because we certainly are always short-staffed. However, training is just as important. If we don't have properly trained firefighters who can keep their skill sets up, because again, we're very lucky, we haven't had a lot of structured fires here in town, that could change at any moment. But if we don't have structured fires, those firefighters still need their skill sets, and they still need to practice those evolutions that we require of them on the fire ground, so training is very important. I would like to have both, but I understand we're in a budget crisis and we need to do what we can to minimize costs.
Right, and this entails like a full-day operation, or...
Yes, this was a six-hour day.
Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate your ability to stay within the numbers that we pushed onto you and still be able to keep the people safe. Thank you.
We have the manager, and then Counselor Steves.
I apologize to the council that I didn't offer you any thoughts on this earlier, but I'm kind of still learning how this budget process works. I thought the subcommittee, where we had a very thorough discussion of this, was where you vetted these sorts of questions, and they didn't come up with counsel, or else I would have spoken sooner. But hearing this discussion now, I get the feeling that maybe this funding might be in jeopardy, so I'd like to just say to you what caused me to put it in the budget and why I very urgently and strongly recommended it to your favor. We live in an era where the resources of a single community responding to a public emergency can be very quickly outstripped, very quickly. Some of the tragic school shootings, for instance, very quickly eclipse the ability of the local PD. Structure fires, even a single structure fire sufficiently sized, Eight Mill Street, one of the large mill buildings, can quickly eclipse the ability of a single department to handle that. And I can go on giving you all sorts of disaster and tragic scenarios that highlight the news every day, and you're all as familiar with them as I am. The point is, if the occasion you pick to first have your fire department come together and confront that challenge is one of those real, is the day when one of those real events occurs, and that fire department has never practiced before that date, then the chances of containing that emergency, reducing that tragedy, making it manageable, are pretty slim. And what we've learned over and over, the Marathon bombing and many other events, is that if we don't practice large-scale disaster events before they occur, then we are very ill-equipped when they occur, and so we don't do a very good job with containing them. In the literature that I read constantly as a town manager on emergency services, it's full of information these days about how to respond to things like Sandy Hook, the Marathon bombing. These events are happening, unfortunately and tragically, all the time. And one of the things they're emphasizing over and over is that large-scale department-wide training is critical to the success of managing those incidents when they occur. When the chief proposed this, we had a discussion about it, I wasn't very hard to sell, frankly, because I'd done all that reading. He gets even more reading and exposure to it in professional meetings, and so I embraced it right away. Now, in order to do this, what I said to the chief is, you're going to have to cut twenty-three thousand dollars somewhere else in your budget in order to still fund this and still come in under the parameter of two percent. And he did a beautiful job at that. He made the cut, we put the twenty-three in, and he came well under the parameter. I think he ended up at one-point-six, if I'm remembering right. So, I would strongly urge the council not to eliminate this funding, because while it may be the case that we do this training and we never have that event, and I would pray God that we don't, it is very much the case that if you do have one of those events, you are going to wish that you did this training.
Counselor Steves?
I was wondering, this is through you to the fire chief again, have you seen specific issues that you hope this kind of a training will address?
Well, again, because we don't have a lot of structural fires, which is a good thing. It truly, truly is. While we try to do training on a day-to-day basis with the staff that's working, the call volume that we get does not allow for us to do, you know, small-type trainings. Now, again, I could get pretty technical and talk about all of the different evolutions that occur on the fire ground, but to put hose evolutions, ladder evolution, search-and-rescue, engine company operations, you know, aerial ladder operations, to put all of that together on the fire grounds, I needed time to do that and the people to do that. So, really, the only way to get that fully accomplished is to take one day out of the year and put that all together. So, that was why I put the request in. We've never done it before. Again, like I said, our department works as a team, and like the town manager said, it takes more than one group, really, at any large-scale event that we have. So, when you start putting multiple groups together, if we don't get them to work together in a training session to understand where they're weak and where their strengths are, like the town manager said, I hate to find that out on the fire ground or during an emergency. And unfortunately, in history, we've had some emergencies here in town where we've needed the whole department to function as a team, and they do very well. And we try to identify our weaknesses, but we have no way to practice those weaknesses at another time, you know? So, this was an opportunity that I think we really should try to take advantage of if we can.
Second, Counselor Vecia?
Through the fire chief. Specifically, what kind of training is this that you don't train all year long about? What, you're going to take one day, and what kind of training are you going to do?
Well, the hope is that we create a scenario for our firefighters to respond to. Whatever the scenario is, we want to encompass all of their skill sets, like we just talked about a moment ago. Hose evolutions, moving hose, pulling hose, setting up ladders, working as a team, figuring out how to get the hose up over the ladder. Aerial operations, when we have to use the aerial, whether it's the tower truck or the ladder truck. Search-and-rescue operations, when you start putting multiple people in a building, you have to learn how to manage hallways, how to manage the search of rooms. That's really what we try to need to focus on.
So, you, all these years, you haven't had this training?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Not as a team effort in this type of capacity.
As a team effort?
Yes.
So, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the public safety portion of the budget? Do you have anything, Mrs. Harnoy, or just not sure if you're coming up for a comment or not, that's all? Okay.
One comment that I can make on the departmental, the governmental budget, the fire department total increase is point-seven-one percent.
It's not one-point-six. You might have just stated one-point-six.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Less than one percent?
Yes, less than one percent, and it's right on the latest departmental sheet that we had sent out.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Carrasco?
Again, I just want to make a point clear. I am not against the training aspect of it. I'm against the precedence that we're going to set for other departments. We have other departments that are larger in size, and they're going to want to do a department-wide training. So, this year, it might be costing us twenty-four. Get ready for next year, maybe it's forty. It might be a different department. So, that's, I don't like the precedence that we're setting. That's all I'm saying.
Counselor Pellican?
I would argue that the police and fire departments' needs are kind of unique. I mean, I used to be a librarian before I was a stay-at-home mom, and we never had a, we've never had a library-wide training for something, because we need to keep the library open for the public. I mean, I think that the police and the fire folks need the training they need to do their jobs, and we should support this. And I wouldn't be terribly worried about setting a precedent for other departments. Like, the planning department probably isn't going to have a department-wide training, the library probably won't. I mean, I can understand that you're concerned about a department-wide training, but I think that we have a lot of different departments in town that do a lot of different things, and outside of a public safety department, I really wouldn't see the need for a department-wide training, and I don't know that I would support one. So, I do understand your concern, but I don't, I don't share it.
To my recollection, and the recording clerk can verify, we do not as yet have a motion on the public safety budget at all, do we? We do?
There's a motion, Counselor Vecia, need it?
Just to accept the actual proposed budget.
Public safety, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Excuse me, did I make the motion to approve?
Yes.
It was just for the public safety portion?
To accept the public safety portion as proposed by the manager.
Okay, okay.
All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
No.
No. Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no?
Motion carries, or the budget, that portion of the budget passes?
Next section is public works. DPW operations and administration, one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, forty-four dollars, and DPW snow and ice, four hundred thousand dollars, for a public works total two million, fifty-five thousand, forty-four dollars.
Counselor Vecia?
I make the motion to approve the public works budget of two million, fifty-five thousand, forty-four dollars.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Carrasco?
Again, this is another budget that during the subcommittee I did not vote in favor, and I stand to my word. I am not in agreement with the salary of our current acting DPW director and the shifting of the new position, which will include another pay raise. So, again, I stand, and I will not vote in favor of this budget also.
Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mrs. Harnoy. Again, I'm going to ask you this question, I believe I asked you a couple weeks ago, in regards to the snow and ice. We are expecting some type of reimbursement from the state.
She just clarified that we are...
There's times I can't hear you guys, I apologize. It's some microphones, it's not me, because I do have a big mouth sometimes. We are going to get reimbursed by the state, some portion of the snow and ice removal, correct? We are, we are expecting some money back, because there's a huge, if you look at the, it went up like ninety-one percent or something like that, something crazy. So, I just want to make sure that we are, I want you to say it on TV, yes, we're expecting to get something back from the state, reimbursement for snow and ice.
Yes, that is correct. And if you are looking, are you looking at the fifteen budget versus the sixteen budget?
I was looking at, yes, the FY fifteen and FY, yeah, ninety-nine-point-eight-zero percent, yes.
Actually, that was a reclassification of where we're budgeting the revenue. We would budget two hundred thousand in DPW snow and ice in fifteen, and then we appropriated two hundred thousand to stabilization. For sixteen, we're just taking the total four hundred thousand and appropriating it right to snow and ice.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Pellican?
I would just like to say that I appreciate that we have a snow and ice budget this year that more accurately reflects the costs of the snow and ice removal. I wasn't really comfortable with the budget number last year in taking it out of stabilization. It seemed like wishful thinking. So, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
No.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Nope.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no?
That portion of the budget carries as well?
Next section, security services. Health department, eight hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-four. Veterans and community center, one hundred and two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight. Library, four hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and thirteen. Recreation, forty thousand, nine dollars. Under EHS program accounts, veterans benefits, a hundred and forty thousand. Veterans memorials, two thousand seven hundred. Total of those two program accounts, a hundred and forty-two thousand seven, and the human services total, one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars.
I'll make a motion. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So, the motion obviously being to accept the proposed amount. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Okay, that portion carries as well.
Education, Southbridge Public Schools, this is the amended amount from earlier in the meeting, twenty-five million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Bay Path, the Bay Path operating budget of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And then the Bay Path debt service portion, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one twenty-one, for a subtotal Bay Path of one million, one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three, for an education revised total, twenty-six million, six seventy-seven, zero eighty-two.
I make a motion to accept twenty-six million, eight, seven, seventy-two? Could you repeat the number again, because it's not what's on our sheet.
Twenty-six million, six seventy-seven, zero eighty-two.
Zero eighty-two.
So, we have a motion from Counselor Clements, and I believe Counselor Vecia seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Counselor Manah?
I do have a comment, because there's a budget meeting for the school Monday, so I'm kind of concerned about this number. So, I don't... Does anybody have any clarification?
Does anybody have any one?
Clarification, there's a budget, there's another budget meeting on the school Monday, so this number, to me, doesn't, it's not accurate.
Counselor...
Mr. Pecos? My suggestion to the council is that you approve this budget, having now decided that you wish to appropriate the additional funds that were available in furtherance of the charter requirement that you adopt a budget no later than May thirtieth of the year. It's actually the last day of the eleventh month of the fiscal year preceding the year in which the budget will take effect. That's the language out of the charter. If you decide after Monday night or at any other date prior to July first, that would be your deadline, to change this budget, you can do so. You can increase it, but you must adopt some budget by...
I understand that, I was just concerned, because the number's going to change again, I feel. So, we got Mrs. Stanton up here, she would like to explain. That would be great.
We have a standing budget subcommittee of the school committee, where we discuss budget issues, not just related to fiscal year coming up, but also to make plans for having ongoing conversation with town council. So, it is a subcommittee, we are not discussing the budget or changing any numbers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Counselor Pellican?
So, where on the agenda would we decide what to do with a hundred and eight thousand dollars from the Senate budget? Because I would like to vote on adding it to the school budget.
I have in my folder here to hand you, Budget Change Memo Number Ten. The council has an opportunity to increase the tax title budget by a substantial amount. I'm going to recommend fifty thousand dollars, which would come out of that hundred and eight. The reason, I will get into when I explain that, it's very good for the town financially, we get all the money back, and so I'm going to recommend that you tie up at least fifty thousand of that hundred and eight with an additional appropriation. I suspect when you hear the reasoning behind it, you're going to unanimously agree, it makes great sense. Between the hundred and eight and the fifty, there is sixty-eight thousand still available. The council can do what it wishes with that. Now, remember...
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, I'm sorry, fifty-eight, not sixty. Now, fifty-eight. Now, I am going to say to you, again, that this hundred and eight thousand rests upon the understanding that when the conference committee is done with its work, they're meeting now, that we do in fact get the amount of Chappa Seventy and UGGAA and all the other accounts, which comports with the Governor's House one, the House budget, and what was the Senate budget as well. If that were to change, then the assumption that appropriating this hundred and eight or any portion thereof rests on could also change, and you might have to come back and thereof rests on could also change, and you might have to come back and change the budget later. I don't think that's going to happen, or I would not recommend it, but you need to be aware of that. I'm very comfortable with the $50,000. As the number gets bigger, I'm less comfortable, but, you know, I think it's there.
Any other questions? Counselor Vecchia?
What agenda item is the town manager talking about?
Item six.
The next agenda item.
We got a motion to approve $26,677,082, is that correct?
I could just make one comment before you do the vote. So there was $108,336 in the unrestricted general government aid that was not budgeted. Now, the same number has been maintained by the governor, the House, and the Senate up to this point. So if we use, if the council agrees to use a $50,000 for tax title, there's still $58,336 available, and this would be the point, what I would recommend, if there was going to be a suggestion for a change, it would be at this point of the budget.
I have Counselor Steves.
I'm not done.
Sorry. Proceed.
Sorry. What you're saying is to add $108,000 to the school figure, is that what you're saying?
No.
No.
There's $108,000 which we predict will be available. It does not yet show in the total revenue on this spreadsheet. We are confident, the reason it doesn't show there is because at the time we did this projection, the Senate hadn't passed her budget yet.
You stating to add $108,000 to this 26.6 million?
No. We're recommend, we're going to recommend in a moment, under item six on the agenda.
Okay, so we're still on item five?
Yes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much.
Counselor Steves?
I would like to move to add $58,336 to the school budget.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that proposal, that motion? Counselor Vecchia?
Well, we're going to bring that up in number six, so why are we voting for it in here? That's half of the money, what?
Number six is for $50,000.
Different subject matter, under item six.
And you're sure we're going to get this money?
Well, I'm as sure as I trust the Massachusetts Legislature, how about you? Because if you don't trust the Massachusetts Legislature to produce this money, then the council should not vote it, because you will come back later and you will cut this budget by what you're doing tonight. I'm confident, the CFO is confident, and so had we known at the time we did this what the Senate was going to do, we'd have put the $108 in. But the Senate just acted a couple of weeks ago, so we just, it's new information.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I understand that we're in a difficult position in regards to having this $108,000 and what we're going to do with it. But again, I stand to what I say. Giving money is not the problem. I was in favor of the first amount, that's fine, but an additional 58, do we know, again, the cost of the restructure plan? Do we know the cost of unemployment? Do we know the cost of legal, if it was to happen? Because again, during the last EHS meeting, I brought up the question, was unemployment included in their budget? Which was one of the questions that our town manager asked the school department to do. That was no. $200,000 for unemployment, which they were going to take control of, was not in that number, in that figure. So, again, we don't know, there's, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces here in regards to our school district. We don't know where we're going to stand. Are we going to, are we going to get stuck with the unemployment bill, like we've had in the last four or five years? Legal fees? Again, these are the questions. Why can't we just keep this money here, and once we know if there's going to be more cost of unemployment, we have it. Because right now, if we look at our budget, we're almost balanced to the penny. So, if things happen, people get laid off, the district gets sued, things happen, what are we going to do as a community? Where are we going to get that money? When we're trying to survive off of, living off CASL money, because that's the whole reason we're not doing the tax levy. So, we're going to tap into CASL money to be able to pay for a school bill? I don't know. Again, I was okay with the $36,000. Thirty-six, okay, but another 58? When we don't know the cost of a major restructuring. Again, it's not only the middle school, I said it last night at the school committee meeting, it's a district-wide restructuring. We haven't gotten those numbers. As a council, if you did, show them to me, because I want to know. We don't know the numbers of restructuring. What was presented in the 88 pages was, these numbers are, these positions are eliminated, these positions are created. But what about unemployment costs? Is that figuring in? What about legal costs? Is that, I mean, we got to think ahead. That's all I got to say.
Ms. Harnoway?
I would just like to point out to the council, according to the town's charter, in order to increase a budget, it requires a two-thirds vote.
Counselor Clemmons?
Sorry, I had my hand up before. I was going to, I was going to ask, if we don't make any movement on this supposed windfall, the $108 that is 99.9% assured that we're going to get, it sounds like, with the exception that there's always that .01%. If we don't make any recommendation for it, does that hurt in any way? Do we not, or will we benefit less? Can we wait until things have sorted out somewhat more with the school, as we said, and then decide what to do with the money? I realize it's nice to have it nice and clean and tidy, but it, is that a problem?
You can reestimate, you can change estimated receipts and raise and appropriate all the way up until such time as you set your rate in November-ish. Once you set your rate, you can no longer raise and appropriate. After that date, you can only transfer from available funds. So, you could wait until July to be sure that this money materializes, and then vote, not supplement it.
Or where it should go.
Right, or some other place. Now, to some extent, departments, you know, want to know where it's possible by July 1, what their budget's going to look like, because that affects hiring, firing, and all that sort of thing. So if, I think what Karen and I are saying to the council is, we are 99.9%, we are as sure that you will get this additional $108,000 as we are sure that you are already going to get the three or four million, which this just adds on to. Your choice whether to appropriate it tonight or hold off is the council's choice. Because this money came so late, it did not get put into this budget and considered in the way I would have done had this money materialized three months ago. So, you know, I'm complicating your lives by reporting to you tonight that there's $108 available, but I am derelict in my job if I don't report that to you, so that you can consider, do you want to do something or not?
Right. It just seems like it would, it would appear that there has been some, while some would want it sent directly to the school, there, it would appear that there's still some questions and concerns in regard to how the school is spending the budget that has been allocated to them. And I'm not sure if we anticipate that they will come up with more answers for us anytime soon. So I'm not, I'm a little hesitant to, to give more without some more documentation as to what they're doing. I don't believe that, I wasn't at the meeting because I had my own last night. I don't believe any action was taken to move forward, or, or stay the same, or whatever. So we still don't know if the restructuring's happening, or what they're doing. And, and it is a concern. Unemployment is a concern. What is the anticipation that, on the unemployment side, that this restructuring, or, or not even restructuring, but in general, in general, what is the anticipated unemployment that we may see in the, in the next year? Obviously, there are good teachers, not such great teachers, that, you know, maybe you did a hire, and perhaps we, we need to let someone go, or you need to let someone go. So is there an anticipation on that number, even without restructuring? Those, those are some questions, I guess, concerns that some of us have. Just my thoughts, thank you.
At the EHS meeting, week ago, I think it was roughly, the last one, I reported to the council that I had not yet seen definitive school department action on four initiatives that I had introduced to them, and set out a, something of a litmus test, if you will, to measure, gauge the school department's willingness to engage in what I thought was meaningful management changes that would reduce spending in the school department, and would signal to me that was appropriate to augment their budget. I will tell the council, I've since had conversations with the superintendent, and I'm a little more confident that, on two of the four, that there is definitive forward motion. One is the selling of the school that the administration is currently occupying. There is $50,000 in the capital budget, for the purpose of hiring engineers or architects to analyze the Cole Street building. The idea being, what parts of it can be retained and at what cost, because a lot of that building is in very bad repair. One of the options the school department needs to know is, can they occupy part of that building, particularly the historic part in the front, the two-story building? I would say that's very good faith progress. You can't make decisions, you know, without the information, what's it going to cost to renovate it, and can you make it appropriate for school quarters? Now, were that to occur, the cost, the operating cost to run that whole building would go down dramatically, because I suspect a lot of the occupancy would be abandoned, if not the building torn down, parts of it, and a small part occupied. So I would say, that's very good faith, and that was a very real conversation I had with superintendent. The second one regarded the maintenance department leaving the, the old fire department and moving to the DPW. I've said to the council before, I've been down to the DPW, toured it with the acting director, and I think it's easily large enough to accommodate the needs of the maintenance department. The superintendent indicated that she needs me to get some clarity with respect to the deed restriction on that property, which says pretty clearly that if it ceases being a fire department, it must revert back to the owners. And if, whether that's the case or not, I don't know, but one thing is for sure, there is no authorization for the use of that building to be changed by the municipal government. So frankly, the current use, the school maintenance department is occupying it, I think quite clearly unlawfully and in violation of the gift, the deed restriction. Conversation with the superintendent, again, was if I can get some clarity on that, and get a legal opinion, and get that over to her, then she will immediately take some action in definitively relocating the maintenance department, and probably to the DPW facility where I think we've got plenty of space to accommodate them very nicely. And again, that would result in a substantial savings in the school budget, because currently they heat and light that building, and so if they didn't need to do that, that would be great. It also would make the building potentially, and again, this depends on the deed restriction, available for sale. And I've said to the, to the school department that if that were to come to pass, my recommendation to the council would be to take the proceeds of the sale and let the school use it for a one-time capital expenditure of some sort. So, I can report to you that I think there's definitive motion on two out of the four. The other two, legal and unemployment, I'm a lot less sanguine about that, continue to be very concerned, and I don't have any closure that I would say to you represents, but I can say to you, in good faith, you know, tells me that there's going to be a reduction there. But as the old saying goes, I think it's two out of three ain't bad, well two out of four ain't bad either, and I think we're making some progress. And I think the council needs to be aware of that. There's been some good faith movement, and so I, you know, I think in, in honesty, we, we need to recognize that. Whether that recognition comes in the form of additional money in the budget, hey, that's up to the council. But I think it's incumbent on me to say, you know, there's been some good work done.
Growing list. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for your input on that. You know, it's nice that you had that conversation, and, but sometimes you believe something, and then it doesn't come to, sometimes you believe something, and it doesn't come to fruition, and then you told something again, so you start losing trust. I'm going to err on the side of caution also, and I agree with Counselor Carrasco and Counselor Clemmons, until we see some stability and we actually know what's going on, I say we, we just hold on to this money and not just give it away willy-nilly. Thank you.
I have Counselor Steves.
I can't disagree with what you've said, however, my, my concern is that we've got, we're kind of in a position where we're seeing two competing interests here. One is obviously we do want to try to avoid using as much of the CASL money as possible, we've talked about that repeatedly, and I completely agree with it, because it's not sustainable in the long run, and it'll eventually sink us if we do. But on the flip side, we also see a lot of issues from the schools that they're being forced, essentially, the state is essentially forcing them to do a whole slew of different things. And we saw some of the lists of their priorities that are, that, that the needs that are in there are not, are not always of the school community's making. There are issues in the schools that we are aware, we're all aware of, a lot of the sped issues, a lot of the other things that are going on, that, that something needs to be done about them. And the budget that they were requesting is, doesn't have a chance of passing, obviously, we're not even, not even discussing it. But some of these other issues could be, could be possibly addressed by a little extra. And I'm not a huge, I'm not, I'm not a tax and spend guy either, because I'm, you know, I understand that we don't want to, to burn the taxpayers of our community any more than necessary. But this is also part of our community. I mean, the schools, there isn't really a, there isn't a town and school split, it's the town. This is the town of Southbridge. The schools are a significant part of our town, and what we can, what we can invest into the schools can hopefully make a difference in the kids that are going to be the town leaders in the future. And we all know that. Whether this is, this is probably not enough. And I understand the concerns that several of you have just stated, you know. We do need to see further forward motion on some of the issues that the town manager raised. But they are, but they are part of the town.
Counselor?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecia?
We have a figure on the floor, $26,677,082. We're going to keep on talking all night long about...
Fifty-eight thousand. There's a, there's a motion now for 58,000 additional funds.
That's the motion on the floor at the time being.
Well, can we vote on the motion? Because we, all we do is keep on talking back and forth.
Move the question.
Move the question.
So the motion is to increase the school department budget by an additional...
Fifty-eight, three, three, six.
Fifty-eight, three, three, six?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call please.
Counselor Vecia?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
No.
Counselor Clemmons?
No.
Counselor Estrada?
No.
Counselor Manna?
No.
Counselor Moriarty?
No.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Two yes, seven no?
Motion does not carry. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on the education budget as a whole? Just briefly, before we do the roll call, I will be, under the advice of town legal council, recusing myself for potential conflict of interest. Roll call please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty? Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecia?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries. Back to Mrs. Harnoway.
So that brings us to the general fund budget totals of $48,507,028. So what I will do is I will go back and reread the, the vote with the revised figures in it. Okay. So vote to adopt the FY 2016 Town of Southbridge General Fund operating budget per the attached voting document, in the amount of $48,507,028. Raise and appropriate $44,877,101. Transfers from other available funds, $1,200,000. Transfers from other available funds, $1,237,514. Subtotal other transfers, $2,392,413. For a total general fund budget, $48,507,028.
By the way, I know there's been a lot of changes. Don't worry about the accuracy of your notes, we will get you clean budgets that reflect everything the council did tonight, okay?
We need a, we, actually, no, we've already, we've already voted to adopt, we would be just altering that number pursuant to all the other adoptions, so. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the overall omnibus budget figure? Seeing none, same recusing. Go ahead.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Present.
Counselor Pellicwen?
No.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
No.
No? Okay. Seven yes, I'm sorry, six yes, two no?
Motion carries. Move on to Agenda Item Number Six, vote to raise and appropriate $21,800 to the fiscal year 2016 tax title revolving accounts. At this point, I'll turn that over before we have a motion to the manager.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, I'm sending a memo down. It's not very complicated, it's pretty simple. So, the recommendation under Item Six currently is to raise and appropriate $21,800 to the tax title revolving account. We're gonna recommend $71,800 or $50,000 more. The source of the revenue is the additional state aid. Here is why. Currently, we have so little in the tax title account, this is the account that we use to chase delinquent taxpayers. Unfortunately, because the funding is so low, we can't hire enough, we can't do enough work to chase those delinquent taxpayers, so that the size of the delinquent bill continues to grow, and by the time we get around to them with this $12,000, which is pitiful, $21,000, pitifully inadequate funding, the value of the taxes owed, plus the interest, ends up being a bigger number than the property is worth. The ultimate end of the tax title foreclosure process is that we end up seizing the property, reselling it, and are paying ourselves back the taxes that are owed. Or somebody redeems it, pays the taxes back, or we have an auction and we get the taxes redeemed, and whoever wins the auction gets the property. To give you this a little bit more substance, at the current time, we have 419 parcels in tax title, 68 of which were transferred there at the beginning of this month. There are several that have balances that exceed $20,000, and if we continue with the $21,800,000 budget, many will owe more than the value of the property by the time we have funds to begin foreclosure. This is an enormous disadvantage to the taxpayers, because what ends up happening when we finally do seize that property, when we get around to it, the difference between what we can sell the property for and the taxes owed gets written off. Put another way, every other taxpayer in the town has to make that up. I don't need to tell you, though I'm sure most people find that most repugnant and do not like that. If the council votes the 50,000, we will use it as follows. $12,000 will be used for demand letters to be sent by our tax title attorney to 400 parcels. $29,500 will be used to file foreclosure on 50 parcels at the land court at a cost of $590 each. $8,500 will be used for legal costs associated with the foreclosures. The best part of this is, we get all that money back, because if we're successful, all the money comes back to the towns' coffers through the redemption process, the tax title process, and so we get to put that money back into the tax title revolving account, and then we get to use it to go after more delinquent taxpayers. Until finally we get to the point where we are, like most communities, able to tax title delinquent taxpayer accounts before they get upside down, i.e., the value of the property is less than the value of the taxes owed to the town, and the taxpayers have, all the other taxpayers, the good people who pay their bills, have to make that money up. This is an unfortunate dilemma that you've got, and this 50,000 is not going to wholly soul, solve it, but it is going to make a dramatic improvement in the, in the situation, and it's gonna allow you to begin to reverse a process which right now is hurting our finances very substantially and costing the taxpayers a lot of money in the form of tax scofflaws who frankly know they can get away with it.
Counselor?
Yes.
I have Counselor Vecchia.
Just to verify this, where are you gonna get the 50,000 from again?
It's a raise and appropriate of general, general taxation and receipts.
Is this gonna cost us any money? Is this gonna raise taxes, 50,000?
No, this is, 50,000 is coming from the additional state aid I described earlier.
That's right, okay, so you said two things again, but the answer that I was looking for, this is that additional state aid that we're gonna get?
Correct.
That's 108,000, you said?
Yeah, we're using 50 of the 108.
Okay, that's all right with me, thank you.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mindy. She was waiting for me. Thank you for putting this in our packets, the, the principal age and balances as of May 14th, 2015. So if I'm reading this correctly, the total due in excise, personal property, real estate, sewer, tax title, and water for 2015 is $3,077,61.10. In 2014, the total amount due is $1,465,802.57. The total amount that's past due, again, for 2013, that people still owe, a little bit lower, thank you, $358,606.29. 2012 and prior, $893,734.3, for a grand total of that the taxpayers owe this town, $5,788,903.99. Is that correct? Correct. That's a lot of money.
It is.
I, I see that there's, what happened in 2013 that's different? Because, I mean, I see a big decrease. In 2012 and prior, well, what's the prior? What, what years are those?
That's everything.
It's everything?
Everything, right.
Okay. So, but I see, I do see a big decrease. What, what happened so special in 2013 that you were able to get that down?
Well, the due in 2012 and prior could go all the way back to, I'm trying to think the oldest tax title.
Well, I'm talking about, yeah, I understand going back, but in 2013...
It's several years. That's several years.
Compared to 2014, I remember there was a campaign of some sort, that was, you put names in the papers and you were demanding, and, and you had the money to do that. Is that something that we could possibly do this year to get, to get this money? I mean...
We do put, the tax titles have to be advertised, so those are advertised, they were advertised, I believe it was at the end of March, for the unpaid 2014 taxes. If you look in 13, the tax title total is 311,000, a lot of the others are much less. What happens, excise tax, personal property tax, mostly excise tax, we can mark somebody's license. So if you don't pay your excise tax, you go to the registry, try to renew your registration, try to renew your license, you can't.
So you, so they get, they, they need their license, of course?
Correct, correct. We also do water shut-offs, and we're working on water shut-offs right now, and that's any water past due prior to June 30th of 14, we're shutting off. So the water's already almost two years old. So we do water shut-offs. But on the real estate, our recourse is tax title.
Okay, I, I do remember when Mr. Clark was Town Manager, there was one year, he did a campaign, he went to the paper, he, it wasn't, I don't, I think it was a story they did, and...
That was the water sewer. We, we published it, we posted it on the bulletin boards, we let the press know, and they would come in and copy down some of that information.
Did you get a turn, good turnout and payments back then when that happened?
We were shutting off the water at that point. We hadn't done shut-offs in a couple of years, because there were so many, the water department was overwhelmed with them. So we did get payments, because they had to pay it or their water was getting shut off.
Right. This is an enormous amount of money that we end up paying for in the end, and the others don't. So that's very disturbing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have, nobody else marked yet, Counsel Clemens?
What you're referring to, Councilman, is when we did start being stricter on the water and sewer, that was the big decline. And it, it came about in a number of ways, but mostly, I know for me personally, I had asked what our receivables were on water and sewer, because we seemed to be having so much conflict and controversy on that, and I'd asked Mr. Clark, and he had said, we're collecting, you know, 80% or something, and I thought, so, so 80% of the people are paying for the other 20% of the people's bills. It just didn't seem right. What do we do about that? And I was told, well, we really don't, we, we put interest and fees and fines, but unfortunately, nobody, people still weren't paying, and that is when we came up with a plan to put the names out there of the top 100 or so, or 50, first 50 or so of the, the highest, I mean, we had bills in 26, $30,000 bills that hadn't been paid in years. And because of that campaign, and then after the first ones, the second batch came out, and people knew we were serious about putting names in the paper and making sure people knew that they needed to do something. And they collected almost $500,000 in water and sewer bills during that one very large push to get the money back. So you'll notice that in 13, you know, the numbers go down. Of course, I see they're starting to creep up, and that worries me a bit, and some people wait. Some people say, I, I'm not really late until June, I mean, yeah, June 30th of the next year. And it's unfortunate that, and then they'll come up due, because maybe they need a permit, or maybe they need something, so they wait and they pay just before they need to. And, and it's a shame, because it hurts everybody. If you can pay, you should pay. You know, they're, they're truly hurting people out there that cannot, obviously, there are issues, but it, it's a shame, and I, you know, I applaud Mr. Clark for moving forward with the plan. It was sad that it had gotten to that point, and nobody was minding the store, technically, I'm sorry, I have to say that. And that was one of the things with the IMA in Charlton that I was very concerned about, was that what happens if other town get, get, the other town, if Charlton gets delinquent on their water and sewer, and how do we ever collect our money from there? And, and Mr. Pagos made sure that in there, that the town has to give us back the money at the end of the year, and then they can go after the, the excess for them, for, for their own residents. So I think that was, that was really good of us to think forward in that respect, so, but that was the push. It's a shame the taxes, we can't seem to get them to, to pay up. Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Through you, to Mindy too. I was curious, I don't know if you have an exact number, and I don't really expect one, but do you have any feeling for how many of these properties are actually livable homes? And how many of them are absentee or bank-owned?
In, in the tax title...
Yeah.
Accounts, the 419 accounts, there's two developers that each own over 100 parcels each.
Wow.
One of them I hear from occasionally, because he's trying to get a permit, which he has to come up with, I mean, by, by Massachusetts General, a lot of set up a payment agreement on tax title, a formal payment agreement, you have to pay 25% of the balance, and then there's equal monthly payments, and there's a schedule based on how much the account balance is. So there's, one of them, we've heard absolutely nothing from in about two and a half years since he's been in tax title, and he has probably 130 parcels.
Hmm.
And we've heard nothing.
And are these actually built parcels, or just vacant land at the moment?
No, they're not.
Don't know?
They're, they're not buildable parcels. They were at one point part of a subdivision, they were all split out. If they were combined, they absolutely could be buildable. It, there's a lot, there's a lot of land.
Oh, okay, thanks.
But many of them are homes, many of them are vacant homes, many of them are bank-owned, but some of them are homes that are being lived in, some of them are businesses, you know, it's, it's a lot of everything.
Yeah, if we had had this tax money, we wouldn't have had the debate we just had a few minutes ago.
Counselor Vecchia?
Can I ask a question? I'm just curious. This is not being televised, right?
It is.
Because the TVs are shut off.
They are having a technical problem with the television in the back of the room, but it is being broadcast live on cable access.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Thank you.
No problem. Your agent has called.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? We all do. Counselor Manna?
I would just like to say, I, I'll support this $50,000. So, we need to get our money. I mean, sometimes to get the money, we have to spend a little bit, and this is one of those cases. Thank you.
I'm sorry? Right, because currently it's not a motion, but, sure.
So I'll make a motion to vote to raise and appropriate $71,800 to the FY 16 tax title revolving account.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Seven, vote that the amount of $3,016,756 is appropriated for the fiscal year 2016 sewer enterprise fund budget to be raised from sewer user charges and other departmental revenues.
So.
Second.
Counselor Vecchia?
Thank you. I think this, I don't know if this goes to Will, or Karen, or Mindy, what is this gonna do to our sewer rates? Is that gonna, how much is that gonna raise our sewer rates? Is this gonna...
There's no anticipation that this budget will require an increase in the sewer rate. However, we're having a sewer rate study, sewer and water rate study done right now, and I would anticipate that capital expenses in the sewer department are gonna require a sewer rate increase, a very small one, but nonetheless is gonna require it. In the water enterprise fund, I don't think they will be in need for a rate increase, that fund looks to be in good shape. However, I do want to say to the council, you've gone some years now, prior to last year, when you did a sewer and water rate increase, you'd gone several years without any. If you want to avoid what is very hard political decisions of every five years or three years doing very big increases and getting people very upset, my advice to you is do small increases every year, a couple percent, one and a half percent, and keep that fund tracking with inflation so that you don't have to make large adjustments, you know, every three or four years. That's just not a smart way to do utility finance.
I, I don't agree with you, because my water bills and sewer, my water and sewer bill's been going up for years. It went way up this year, so when you said it didn't go up at all, I don't know where you're coming from.
You did a rate increase this year.
Well, my, my water...
Prior to that, you hadn't done one.
And I get a lot of calls from people, West Street, that area, okay? Down by Russell Harrington, okay? They're all for turbs, their water and sewer has gone way up. So when you make a comment, I don't know where you're coming from, and you tell me we haven't really increased it, because I just got a call this morning, guy's water bill is $350, and it was only $280 last year.
You did, you made an increase this year.
Yeah. I also remember, and it was either in 2006 or 2007, where the council borrowed from Peter to pay Paul, and we had a lot of money in the water and sewer enterprise funds, and the money was taken out, and I thought illegally, I still think it's illegal, and was put in a general fund, so taxes would, would go down, and the water and sewer went up 200%, okay? So, I understand where you're coming from, you're doing a very good job, but I'm a little guarded against this, but your, your answer was okay. Three million, it ain't gonna increase much, treat, and the next one for the sewer, it isn't gonna increase much. That's a very good answer. People can live with that. So thank you very much.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I agree with what the Town Manager said on the small increases year after year. I remember when we bought our house 10 years ago, and, you know, our water bill was like three times less than what it is now, and our, our property taxes were like $2,500 lower. And then all of a sudden, boom, everything went skyrocketing, and I was told that was because the taxes for the property weren't raised, so the water and sewer rates weren't increased. And that was a, that, that, that made a huge impact. I was like in shock, it's like, oh my God, you know, what do you do now? You're budgeting for this, and now you're getting this. You're budgeting for this and now you're getting this. So, and I talked to many people in this community too, and they expressed to me that if they're going to get an increase, they would like to see it in small increments and not be shocked one year, when, well, hey, we kept it down for four years, but this is the fifth year and guess what? It's going up. So, you know, they did express that to me. They would like to, they would rather see small increments if anything's going to go up than be shocked by the bill that they receive in the mail. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes, through me, through you, Mr. Chair, and I just want clarification. This number is not representing a raise at this time.
No, it's the capital side of it that's going to cause you to have to come up with more money, without a doubt.
So our capital budget that we will discuss at a later time. But this budget right now that we're voting on has no increase?
No, you have a reserve in the sewer fund right now of over a million dollars, million two, I think, help me. So you have the ability with this budget to not increase sewer rates this year. But at the current time, the amount of money that you're bringing in with the current rate is less than what you're spending. So you can defer having a rate increase, but all you're doing is whittling down your reserve, which means the capital projects for sewer, which I've got in here, will not be able to be funded. And at some point, your sewer system is going to break down because it's tottering on bad legs right now, believe me. So we've been avoiding, we've been neglecting maintenance on the sewer plant and we're really in a bad situation. So assuming most or all of the capital budget expenses get approved, you're going to have to increase sewer rates in order to rebuild the reserve that we're about to take some money out of.
Thank you. Counselor Vecchia?
I remember voting for these sewer contracts and these water contracts because we subcontract these out. And to be honest with you, I didn't vote for these contracts. I thought they were much too much money and we could have ran these, the water and sewer departments ourselves. But my question to you is, I was going to ask you this, and I know you're leaving. The water contract and the sewer contract you have, and before you leave, I'd like a copy, and can you tell me when those contracts are up?
Yeah, the sewer, I think, is up, Heather, this year, correct? On June thirtieth? And we're currently reviewing whether we're going to put that out for RFP or renew it. The water contract isn't up for quite a while.
Okay.
Ten years or so.
Really?
Yeah, it's a long-term contract, yeah.
Well, I'd like to see them.
Sure.
And by the way, could we get out of the water contract if we had to?
Not unless there's some sort of a breach of the contract by the company.
Yeah, well, we're paying, their salaries are sky-high and we're paying for them, okay? We should be, we should be running the water company ourselves. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries. At the request of a couple of us, we're going to take a brief recess. We will reconvene at eight oh eight, gives us about eight minutes. And as soon as eight oh eight happens, and we have five people up here, we're starting. Thanks. Thanks. It is 8:09, so we're about a minute shot. Agenda item number eight, vote that the amount of $3,227,989 is appropriated for the fiscal year 2016 Water Enterprise Fund budget to be raised from water user charges and other departmental revenues.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Going once, twice. Roll call, please.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries. Agenda item number nine, vote to appropriate $375,000 from the landfill royalty receipts reserved account number 6790 to the fiscal year 2016 contributory retirement account.
So moved.
Second. Counselor Vecchia.
Through the chairman to the town manager, why are we taking money out of the landfill account to put in retirement?
Because the landfill royalty receipts provides a substantial amount of surplus every year that we don't use any operating budget and it is prudent to fund as much of your unfunded pension liability as possible.
Aren't we going to need that landfill royalty money later on?
Well, if you don't fund your pension liability, you're certainly going to need that and your bond rating is going to suffer.
I mean, that's a, I understand you're making, you're making a joke out of it, but I'm just saying.
I'm not making a joke, I'm being serious.
Yeah, well, the only thing I'm stating to you, you're mixing accounts here. I mean, you're taking account from the landfill royalty account, putting it into retirement, okay?
Well, may I ask a question to the chair? Then from what account would you suggest we fund pension liability?
From a, from the general fund, that's what I would, I would take it out of.
But you just spent everything that's available to set the budget earlier this evening. There's nothing left.
Yeah, then we should have, we should have made the budget less. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
How much would this leave in the royalty fund? I mean, considering, considering we just spent, we just put $850,000 of it into the budget, so.
There was a balance of $1,003,000 in the landfill royalty. We are appropriating between what we took from Snow and Ice vote a couple meetings ago, we took some money out of landfill royalty and within the budget, we're taking some money from there. It's going to leave just over half a million dollars, which is potentially going to be suggested to be used for capital.
The half a million dollars is before, is before this 375 comes out or after?
The half a million would be after this.
After, okay.
All set?
Yeah, thanks.
Counselor Pellican.
I believe using the landfill royalty funds to, I believe using the landfill royalty funds to go into the OPEB trust fund was initially planned that Chris Clark had come up with because the landfill royalties are not a sustainable funding source. We should not be funding our general budget with them. And this was seen as a more responsible and sustainable use for the money because we shouldn't be trying to run the town's budget with it every year. We should put it towards something that we need to pay for. And because we have so many unfunded liabilities in terms of our pension obligations, this seems like a prudent thing to do. So I'm in full support of this as I was when Chris Clark first proposed it about a year and a half ago.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, my only question is how, how long does it take to get back up? Or is this, because if, if it's, if we're going to deplete it?
To get the landfill royalty fund back up?
Is it something that?
It starts generating surplus on July 1st with the first payments coming in. I mean, think of it in terms of if you spend a million dollars and the first million dollars that comes in after July 1st is going into your operating budget. Everything that comes in after that goes, well, it wasn't a million we spent this year, it was 875, I think, or whatever the numbers. After you collect that much in landfill royalty fees, anything else goes into reserve. And it's been running at around $2 million a year. So generally speaking, you probably will get another million over the course of next year.
Thank you.
If I could, I also serve as the chair of the Southbridge Retirement Board and we recently had our actuarial valuation as of January 1st, 2014. The retirement system is 50.8% funded. We can extend that funding schedule to 2038, but what's happening is because the town had committed in a plan a couple of years ago to put in an extra $750,000 a year into the unfunded liability, PERC is not forcing us to increase our funding schedule. They're highly suggesting to every other board that they be funded by 2035 because between now and then, if there's another dip in the market, we will never make 2040. But because we're putting in the $750,000, we can stay with our current funding schedule, which is increasing at 4% per year. So if we don't, if we stop putting this money in, we will have to adopt, adopt a different schedule, which will increase that $3 million appropriation that you just adopted.
Mr. Pecos?
Let me make sure I've got this mini. So based on a 2035 funding schedule, the ARC is 750 per year?
I, they don't do the funding schedule like the OPEB. They don't, it's not, we don't see the ARC like we do on the OPEB. This is on the pension system, not the, they don't show us that.
So the amount, based on a 2035 full funding, what do they say? They say 750 is the amount we should put us in per year?
Well, we're putting in the $3 million plus we're putting in an additional 750. So that should bring us down. We should be, if we're, if we're earning 8% a year, we should be fully funded by 2030.
All right, let me ask you a different question.
Yep.
When you have a pension fund, we're putting a certain amount of money in every year, pay as you go, to pay the current employees' pensions.
Correct.
An actuary sits down and figures out the life expectancy of everybody in the pension fund, all the people who aren't in the pension fund but will be there someday, all the active employees.
Right.
He figures out a approximate earnings rate on the amount of money in the fund. And then he says, this is the amount you should be putting in there in addition to pay as you go in order to get to where in 2035 you are 100% funded. That's called the ARC, the annual required contribution. What is the ARC?
You know, I, I didn't bring any of that tonight.
All I'm trying to get at?
It was just where the questions were coming.
All right, all I'm trying to get at for the council's purposes is the 375 is likely not adequate by a big margin.
Correct. It's the $3 million they already voted plus the 750. Will, just the $3 million would get us funded in 2030, I believe it's 2038.
So in answer to the question I think Apple asked earlier, at the rate of 375, you're probably not going to be fully funded by the year. You want to be fully funded in 2035. So if you don't make, if you don't put these funds aside, then you're not going to get fully funded, which means you have a, you have a structural weakness in your finances. You know you owe this money, but you don't have it in the bank. And so at some point, you have to come up with this money when you have to pay it out and you don't have it in the fund. So we probably should be putting even more aside if we could afford to do it, but this is the number we can afford to do.
Counselor Vecia.
What's this $3 million figure you keep talking about?
In the budget, under, I believe it's under personnel, you appropriated over $3 million to the retirement system.
So this is an extra $375,000?
Correct. And you typically take that vote twice a year and put in $750,000 a year with the intention of taking that at some point when we are fully funded in the retirement system, that $3 million and the 750 go away and that money could be put towards OPEB.
So what you're saying is that each year we put $3,750,000 in for retirees?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a recommendation to the council. If you'd like a presentation on another night about the status of your pension system, we'd be happy to get in all these numbers with you.
I'm not asking.
Oh, no, no, I'm not arguing with you at all, Apple.
I'm just looking at the figure.
I'm just saying, it's a lot bigger and more complex question and we're going to answer here.
No, no.
And we don't have the funding plan in front of us, the actuarial analysis.
Right.
So you're asking us a lot of questions and I'm not sure we're giving you completely accurate answers to.
I just wanted one figure. We're, we're putting in almost $4 million a year for retirees, that's all. It doesn't, it's not complex, it's very simple.
Okay.
Let's keep it simple.
Sure.
I didn't know we were putting that much money in, but that's fine. I understand. I just wish we didn't, we decreased the budget and didn't take it out of the landfill account, that's all. But that's fine with me, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
I'm to Mindy. Just a quick question. You mentioned if we're earning 8% a year, we should be fully funded by 2030. What do we, what is this actually being invested in?
All of our funds are invested in, with the PRIM board. It's, it's the state invests in real estate and all different, all different investments. We have no control.
The investment schedule is enormous and complex. We can't answer you in two minutes what it's invested in. It's hundreds of millions of dollars. And that's what, Mr. Chairman, again, if the council wants to get into this in detail, we're happy to, you should, but we can't do this in a slipshod, fire-from-the-hip fashion.
Question.
We, we would really have to give you a presentation on this with factual information.
Okay.
I, I just, I really am very, very concerned with a question, what are we invested in? Because that requires a very, very complex answer, like the portfolio. Here's the portfolio of everything we're invested in. And then we can tell you, you know, the Blackguard Fund, the Black, I mean, you know, on and on and on it goes. But I, I don't want Mindy to be put in the position of trying to answer a question like that. And in two weeks from now, somebody says, hey, wait a minute, I was on the retirement board. You guys want to know that complexity? We will bring it up to you, but it requires a couple-hour briefing. I'm telling you right now, it's very complex. That's why you have a retirement board.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to know the complexity. All I would want to know in another meeting is how much we are earning every year. Is it 1%, 2%, 5%?
Happy to tell you that, that's again.
It doesn't have to be done tonight, but that's the only thing I would want to know. I wouldn't want a list of everybody. I mean, it's crazy. But I'm just saying, I would just like to know what percent, but that's fine. I'm going to vote for this. I don't like where the money's coming from, but I'm going to vote for this. I'd like to move the question.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries. Agenda item number 11, vote to reauthorize the leased properties revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses, and utilities for all town-owned leased property from lease payments to be deposited in the account with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $100,000 per year.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Counselor Steves?
There's a good question. How, which properties does this actually cover?
Which one?
Which properties does this actually cover?
Which is it?
Which properties does this cover?
This is the money that we use to demolish buildings, correct? No.
No.
I'm sorry. Which, what does it cover?
Foster Street or Community Center?
Oh, okay.
Just in case anybody didn't hear, 70 Foster Street and you didn't say the community center, so. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries. Agenda item number 12, vote to reauthorize the Southbridge Airport leased properties revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 43, Section 53E and 1/2, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses, and utilities for the leased property at the Southbridge Municipal Airport from lease payments to be deposited in the account with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $100,000 per year.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Counselor Steves?
How much are we actually getting into this, Count? How much are we getting in leases from the airport? How much are we actually getting in leases from the airport?
This is actually the first fiscal year that we're doing it as a revolving account. So I don't actually have a good total yet of what we're going to take in in a fiscal year, but they are collecting the rent on the hangars and the tie-downs. So I can give you some more updated information at the end of the fiscal year, if that's okay, so we can kind of look at it.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Vecia.
The point is, this isn't going to cost us any money.
It shouldn't.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Okay, thank you.
Nobody's guaranteeing that.
Yeah, I understand that, but it shouldn't cost us any money.
We'll see.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
If I could just add to, one of the big expenses is the purchase of the airport fuel. So we did make a good-sized purchase, I believe it was maybe around December, January. So in order to recoup those expenses of that, then we have to sell that. So we're going to have to see towards the end of the fiscal year how much of that that we purchased that we've sold.
Very good, thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Vecia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries. Agenda item number 13, vote to reauthorize the municipal hearing officer revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to pay expenses associated with the administration and collection of fines in violation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 148A and Chapter 115 of the Acts of 2009, such fines to be deposited into the account with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $2,500 per year.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Mayarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries. Agenda item 15, vote to amend Schedule 1 to approve a 2% increase and other positional changes as proposed May 26, 2015, to be effective July 1, 2015.
So moved. Second.
No, it would be effective July 15. Counselor Vecia.
These are the increases we approved in the budget?
Correct.
Why do we have to vote on them again?
Because the council has to vote any changes to the pay scale as a separate item.
But we did that when we voted for the budget.
You appropriated the money to fund the pay increase, but you have to authorize the pay increase separately.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Steves?
I think this should be proposed May 28, not 26.
Today is the 28th?
Okay.